So, um, thank you, Liz. All right. So first item on the agenda is an update from the town accountant and treasure collector regarding FY21 finances. So Lisa or Christine, would you like to jump in?
Well, I'll give you my part.
Okay.
Um, we have closed books for 21. Um, everything is with the Department of Revenue. They are having a little bit of problem reconciling our free cash. But at this point, I've told Martin, he needs to figure out what the problem is because I didn't know where to go from there. So he's actually told me that he's moved it on to his supervisor and they're looking at it. So he said he'd circle back and get back to me when he had some more information. So that's where that stands. I mean, Christine and I have been, um, working really hard to try and get everything caught up, to get last year closed correctly. And we still have some problems we're working with. Um, we've, we made it a top priority that we departments cooperate. The checks and balance. And maybe too close previously. Christine? Want to look where you stand?
I agree with you. I mean, with the closing of last fiscal year where we were only involved in June. You know, Lisa and I are basically committed to reestablishing best practices. You know, when we began that by separating the departments. With the closing of fiscal 21, we did come across some small variances where ending month balances, both on the accountant's end and the treasurer's end, um, just didn't, they didn't match up. They weren't huge, but we really want to start fresh with fiscal 22. So, um, on the advice, you know, of the auditors, you know, they said, no, do an internal audit and come to numbers that you both are comfortable with and then own those numbers. So, um, I believe we're headed in the right direction.
Yeah, there were a lot of, I mean, I'm sure partly it was COVID and a strange year, but it took a really long time to get the books closed this year. There were a lot of things. A lot of issues, a lot of problems that we've tried to, had to reconcile and took a lot of time. Christine and I still feel like we have to go over last year's numbers for the actual cash balances. To, to, like she said, come with a number that we can agree on that, let's go from here. I'm, I'm a little concerned about the audit, what's going to happen, but I think, uh, Grady knows the situation we're in and he knows what we're dealing with and, um, I don't know. I, I do have to say it's been a pleasure working with Christine and Tara. You know, we work so well together. She shoots things, asks me questions. I ask her questions and we get things resolved and it's, um, between the two of us, we've got a good base of knowledge there that we're, uh, trying to use to the, our best advantage.
I agree. I agree. Um, I'm very comfortable working with Lisa and I trust her judgment. There's a lot that I know because I've been there for so long that she comes to me, but there's a lot when it comes to finance. That I'm still getting familiar with. So, and honestly, I think Lisa and I can both agree that having Tara Shaw back with the town was the greatest move we ever made. Honestly, she has been spectacular. I'm very proud to be a part of this finance team. So we're just hoping that we can kind of button things up and, um, you know, just take it forward and, and, you know, do the best by the residents and by the town and, you know, just take it from there.
Any questions, John or Mark, for either Lisa or Christine?
I'll just acknowledge the challenge of reconciling, closing the books, um, coming new to the positions and appreciation for your guys' concern. And, um, I think we fully recognize this is a kind of a bumpy year and that next year will be a whole bunch easier. Appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
I do, um, think this is baptism by fire. Certainly the good piece is that because you've had to throw yourselves into it, you're going to have a tremendous knowledge base going forward. The fact that the previous administration wasn't, it wasn't turned over the way it should have been. But I think, uh, we're on the right track. I would encourage you to, uh, work with the auditors. You know, when you find a problem, don't see them as somebody that you have to worry about because they want to see us succeed too. And then I would, one of the things that worried me was that at times, the the, the gap between the treasurer and the accountant was too close. That we need to make sure that there is that firewall as we go forward. Because that's part of the, you know, the built-in audit reconciliation. And I think you guys are doing a tremendous job. I'm sorry it had to be this much work, but I think when we get through to the end, we're going to have a really nice functioning machine again.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say the same. Just thank you so much for all your hard work. I know it's been, I think it's been a labor of love and, um, you guys are truly detectives to figure out, um, all of the, uh, the issues and it has been an ongoing recommendation from the auditor that we did need more separation and, between the, the department. So I'm so glad that you're actually incorporating that. And, um, I think going forward, we will definitely be stronger for it. So thank you all for your efforts and and hard work. And I don't think you're done yet, but, um, you're, uh, definitely moving in the right direction.
We are, we are.
Any idea when, um, free cash may be reconciled?
Um, I, that last email I got from Martin was last week, so it must've been Monday or Tuesday. We're asking, I said, do you need anything else from me? Any other information I can provide? And he said, I've passed this up the line and I will get back to you. And I have not heard back.
Okay.
Not always, it's not always the most responsive, but I think he'll, you know, he knows that it needs to be done and we got, everything got in on time. So it's just a matter of, um, I mean Barbara looked at it too. She had no idea. She didn't know. She says she's never had a problem like that with her free cash before. So hopefully they'll be able to figure out. I'm sure something is in there incorrectly. I'm sure we just don't know what it is.
I think, uh, I would say that, uh, if you find yourself just churning, you know, to the extent you need another resource, please come forward and let us know because this is important stuff that we need to get in. You know, and I think we can find some dollars if we have to, to make sure that, that we get to the right spot.
Thank you.
Great. So thank you very much. And thank you for the update on, um, the work you've done and the, the where you need to continue to go. So thank you so much for that. Okay. Would you guys like to speak about, um, the tax work off program?
Sure. Yes. Um, so we, we, the financial team meeting also met and discussed the, the senior work off tax credit program, which really is an abatement on real estate taxes and they have to work so many hours within a certain calendar year to earn it on their fiscal taxes. So one of the things that, um, Lisa and Christine, myself, we've gone back and forth on and, and I guess it's through the auditors. As to whether it should be processed through the payroll. But we kind of came up with a solution that I think is going to work, which is if we keep the senior tax credit amount $600 and above, we can, um, process, process them as a 1099. So I think that's definitely going to work. Um, it's still maximum for people, seniors at this moment. But one of the things my board would like to put in a warrant article in for next town meeting is to introduce, the veteran tax work off program, which, um, can be adopted next fiscal year. And it operates similar to the senior work off program. It would be run through the council and aging program, our, our office rather. And, um, it is veterans that are eligible and also, um, a spouse of a deceased, um, veteran is also able to, accrue hours to earn it, a credit tax work off, um, on their real estate taxes. So that's, that's where that is unless Lisa and Christine want to jump in on something.
I think that's what we discussed.
Yeah, okay.
So is, is there a maximum number of veterans that'll be able to, uh, partake of that?
That, that's something the Board of Assessors can vote on. Once it's adopted with the town. The Board of Assessors determines the amount and the number because, uh, those funds come from the overlay account.
Is there, do you have a number in mind, Wendy?
We haven't really talked about it right now. It's, it's four for seniors. I would, I would assume we would probably evenly match it with veterans and have four, four slots for veterans as well.
Do we have the ability to increase that four for the regular seniors or is?
We can, we can increase it. We can increase the amount. We've increased the, the max, to the maximum amount for seniors, which is 1500.
Okay. It does feel like it's, uh, something that maybe isn't as widely known as it should be. We certainly have enough seniors in town.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, as long as there's a need in town and, and, you know, seniors and veterans are willing to, to earn, uh, you know, earn hours off their real estate taxes. Yeah, this is, this is great.
Wendy, didn't you say that we only have two seniors right now who put in applications?
We have, we actually have four.
Oh, we do have four now.
Yep, we do have four. Yep.
Yeah, I do feel like if there were more demand or more desire to be involved, this is kind of mutually beneficial project and for other people that could partake of this, uh, if at all possible, we should make that opportunity available. I mean, we benefit from it. They benefit from it and, uh, good program.
Yeah. Yeah. I think maybe if the app, we, we could publicize it a little bit more and see if we can get some more applicants. Really, we've only had four applicants each year. So, um, and it's through the council and aging, they kind of vet them and see where the, the boards and committees and departments need assistance and place them, um, and including the library, I believe. So, um, yeah, maybe, maybe we can do a better job of publicizing it. Maybe we, um, can add it not just in the newsletter, but maybe put something in the newspaper as well.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. I think, um, we almost need to have almost like a little brochure, maybe. Something that, uh, we can get out to people. But that's, you know, we-
I just find, I'm sorry, I just find that, um, we just want to be careful because the amount of work that we have to give the seniors, they do have to work, you know, um, up to 40 hours to, to, to earn. You know, is that not correct? 20, a certain amount off their taxes. And it, I think it's that, I think the tough part on our end is finding the work to fulfill those hours. So if, you know, yes, if some boards and committees could get together and maybe see where there, there's a niche that they could, um, definitely use. It's a fantastic program. I just want to be able to present it properly, um, and completely.
Maybe we could do a little survey. We could send out a remote survey to some of the boards and committees and see where the need is. If they, if they would take in one or, or two, I would assume just one senior, um, possibly veteran work off, um, volunteer, um, and see what, what types of needs those are. I think you're right. Maybe that needs to start first.
Yeah, before we, um, expand the program, definitely.
Yeah, yeah. So it might, it might have to start with council and aging. I'll talk to Colleen Thompson and see if she has time to maybe, um, craft a survey that, that she could send out. Um, and I could help her with that. Probably in, in a month or so.
Wendy, do you need anything from us? Do we need to take any action or is this just informational?
I think probably, you know, it'll be added to when you vote on the warrant, uh, for town meeting. And if there's any discussion, you know, regarding it because it's new, I'd be happy to join. Um, but yeah, eventually I think you'll have to take some action, um, before town meeting. Yep.
Great. Thank you. All right. Anything else on this?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Very good.
Thank you for all the work.
Yeah, Wendy, Lisa, Christine, Tara. Thank you all very much for, um, for your work. Excellent. Great job.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Night.
Bye.
All right. So next item on the agenda is increasing council and aging board members, uh, to seven members. They're currently a five member board and they'd like it expanded to seven members. And this was a request from the council on aging. And since we're the appointing authority, they're bringing this request to us.
I'm all for it.
Okay, Mark?
I, I suppose I just need more information. I, what we gained from this, maybe you know, John. What do we gain from this? Or what do they gain from this?
I think they, they have two members that, uh, I should say members. They have two people who have been active, but not members. They come to the meetings, but they can't vote. And there's a feeling that, you know, I think we've seen a substantial increase in what's going on out of that council on aging. You know, the newsletters now look very professional. They're putting on veterans luncheons. They're trying to work programs. They have a game, program once a month. Now they're talking about maybe starting, um, something like bridge and cribbage programs. So they won't, they're looking to bring these people in because they have a lot of new ideas. And I think it's, it's good to kind of refresh the board and this is a way of doing it. One of the two other people on the board are very old, uh, and haven't participated partly because, because of health reasons. And it's hard, you know, you don't want to go and say, well, we don't want you on the board. But this is a way of kind of reinvigorating it a little bit.
And any concern about quorum issues in, in increasing this? Um, we feel like these new people are very active and-
I've gone to the, uh, my wife and I go to the last three in a row, I think. I guess I missed the last one because of whatever. But, um, there are always, there's always a quorum, uh, it seems. And, uh, I, I don't think there'll be a problem. I, I think there's a, there's a feeling like we've got this going again. You know, we go through these cycles, as you know, with the garden club and the historical society, council and aging. You know, and right now it just feels like council and aging is on a, on a upswing.
So I'm totally fine with it. I suppose my only concern is if the enthusiasm that's there now began to wane. And then we were having trouble filling these positions, but at worst, I suppose we could revert back if we needed to. So in the meantime, I, I'm fine with this.
Okay. All right. So, um, I'll make a motion that we increase the, um, size of the council on aging to seven members. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Russo.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mrs. Joy. Yes. All right. Very good. Okay. Um, GL 268A, section 19 disclosure form, um, filed by town administrator. Liz, did you have just a, a brief?
Sure. So, um, my husband, as you're aware, is employed by a firm that works with the town on their design projects from time to time. I had properly disclosed this relationship to the board in the past, um, via the applicable state form. With the construction on the ramp project starting up, um, I had conferred with the state attorney of the day again, just to find out if I needed to update anything. And upon their advice, um, although it does not appear that his compensation would be directly affected by the work that that firm is doing for the town. They suggested that out of an abundance of caution and to be extra conservative, um, that I could complete and file this section 19 form, um, which is a bit different from the form that I did in the past in that it actually, um, requires a vote of my appointing authority, which is this board, um, basically a determination which would affect if I'm able to participate. To the extent that my job duties require it, like in terms of facilitating communications or, um, you know, contract documents, things like that, um, the current side of things. So everything was properly done in the past, um, but just kind of as a matter of routine, this type of form gets filed with you as the appointing authority. Um, and you have a decision to make as to whether or not, um, you want me to continue participating in this.
All right, Mark or John?
I'd only say I, I welcome the opportunity for the appointing authority to, um, uh, express their comfort for moving ahead and, uh, that there is no conflict of interest to be concerned about.
I'm totally in agreement with that.
Perfect. Okay. Yeah. And, um, I don't know what the, the motion would need to, to say, Liz, but I would, um, be happy to have you continue in your role as a procurement officer for the town and, and any and all, um, activities that are required in that capacity. Is that, would that be sufficient?
Yes, I think so. Um, it looks on the form, um, which I left the original in your office. It's a determination basically that the financial interest or otherwise is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the employee. I guess it would be voting to make that determination.
All right. I'll make a motion that, um, we have made that determination. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second. Mr. Russo, roll call vote. Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mrs. Joy. Yes. Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
Okay. So our next item on our agenda is both the employment agreement with Stephen Silva, the fire chief. Um, we're going to pass this one over. We are so appreciative of the great work the chief does, but we've just got a couple of, um, minor points that we need to get squared away and we should be able to get this voted on at our next meeting. Warrants paid. We've got, um, $589.09 and those were, um, bills from Eversource as well as DSK, who was the architect for the, um, the roof project at the highway barn. And now we're on to appointments. So we've got, um, Kevin Rafferty to bylaw review committee, Cynthia Bloomquist to council on aging and Inez Murphy to council on aging. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Kevin Rafferty to the bylaw review committee indefinitely and which, or until dissolved. Do we want to do these one at a time or as a group?
A group.
Okay. And then Cynthia Bloomquist, council on aging until 6:30 2023 and Inez Murphy, council on aging until 6:30 2024. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote. Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy. Yes. Excellent. Okay, Liz, on to town administrators' updates.
Um, so my update is going to largely be, um, about the storm and kind of recapping from some of that. So as far as the storm went, um, the good parts of it are town departments were incredibly responsive. We had great communication amongst, um, the various department heads. Um, highway department did a fantastic job. Fire department, the chief did a wonderful job as well. Um, police department, they were out there in full force. Also to the transfer station, um, Art Moran kept up great communications with me as far as getting word out about what the situation was there with the power. So everybody did a, a solid job and able to communicate, um, effectively during that. A couple of points of concern, um, the generator at the townhouse, um, that did not function as it was supposed to. We're lucky that this was not a low temperature of event where we'd have to worry about pipes freezing or that type of thing. We are looking at that now. Um, we're getting some information about the current generator. We're also looking at some different possible funding sources. This seems like something that one way or another, we're going to have to pursue, um, in the near future because we don't want issues this winter. If we have more storm activity, um, it wasn't properly, um, operational in terms of with the heating system. Um, the other thing that was affected by it, um, was our server. We still have like physical servers, um, in the building. So I think looking at potentially a cloud-based system, um, as we go forward might be in order. Another item that we're going to look at is, um, ways to get water for residents in the event of an extended power outage. The fire department did a great job as far as allowing people to come and fill up buckets and stuff. I think we need a, a better, um, solution than that. So we're going to get some information about that. Um, we have a meeting tomorrow to kind of with all the relevant department heads and everybody to sort of talk through some of this stuff. Another thing I just want to point out, um, Shaw's supermarket, they were very gracious and kind. They donated, um, some food and water to the police department when they were running the, um, warming center out of there. Um, so that was of them. And I think going forward, we need to make sure that everyone's on the same page with where the warming center will be, what will be the hours. So this was kind of a good test run as far as preparing for the winter. So all in all, I think we can be out of, of everybody's response to it. Um, and then we'll have to resolve some of those technical things hopefully before the winter. And then as far as correspondence, um, we received three letters from Honor Chandler. Two of those letters involved, um, her expressing some safety concerns and a need to clear, um, vegetation, overgrown weeds and that type of thing from the shoulders of the road. Um, and then there was another letter, um, expressing some concerns about the post office and, um, operating from Carver and wanting to know if there was anything that we could do in that regard. I do a call tomorrow with, um, State Representative Kathy Lanatra to just talk through, um, the post office thing. And I did, um, respond to Honor Chandler today and let her know that the board has received the letters. Bree had scanned them and sent them out, um, and let her know that we, we really appreciate her willingness to kind of get involved with the community and, um, bringing these important issues to light. So, um, and I plan to reach back out to her with an outcome. After we've had a chance to go through some of this stuff, but I did send something to her today, um, just letting her know that her concerns have been duly noted.
Thank you, Liz.
For, um, correspondence.
All right. All right. So on to minutes. Um, Bree sent the minutes out today. Looks like they were hung up in her, um, outbox due to all of the, uh, the technical glitches we've had with, um, with Comcast over the next, uh, last couple of days. So, um, did you guys get a chance to read them? The 1018 minutes?
I did.
Okay. I didn't have any changes.
I didn't either.
Mark, did you have anything?
Good, good minutes. Well done.
Excellent. Great. Thank you, Bree. Okay. So, um, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from 1018 as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr., Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy. Yes. Excellent. Great. Thanks, Bree, on that. All right. So we don't have any other business that's come before us. Um, so we're ready for, um, actually, I'll do the, 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 um, next meeting before we, um, go on to rants and raves or raves. So, uh, our next meeting will be scheduled for the 15th and then we've also got a, um, meeting, the regular schedule would put us at December 6th. And those meetings will both start at 5:45. So who would like to go first for raves?
I'm, I'm glad to start. I, I think it relates from the storm and, uh, as, as difficult as that was and challenging, uh, the sense of community, the sense of shared responsibility. Um, I, I was struck again actually by Liz's list and her- I, I was struck again actually by Liz's list and her report of all the departments that were involved in town and, and worked so well together. And I, I, I think sometimes, you know, the, the ones that aren't so visible and people forget how many people in town were working to support our citizens. But just very much appreciate overall a sense that we're a small town and fairly unique, but equally are resilient and appreciate everyone's efforts along the way.
You're here. All right, John?
I second that. I mean, I was following Facebook and if, I don't know if you all saw, there was one Facebook post written by a longtime resident of this town. If you don't mind, I have to take a minute and read it. Chief Silver and Captain John Huestead both visited us yesterday. Seemed it was a wellness check on a couple of old people who are at the end of an impassable 800 foot driveway. They climbed through the mayhem and decided we needed help. While he was here, the chief spoke to ever source and told him he needed a commitment that they would come by and assess the situation. He also realized that we were stuck there with no gas for our generator, no water, and of course, no power. So he called in the cavalry. The DPW was here within 30 minutes with a heavy front loader and Rob Furlotte very quickly moved very, five very large trees off our driveway, making now this now passable. I see a lot of kudos for the chief over the past couple of days, but we saw and were the direct beneficiaries of his command management. No complaints ever about living in Plimpton. We are lucky to live here and have been able, capable, sir, to have capable public service professionals caring for us. In the larger town, they would have larger concerns. Thank you to the Plimpton Fire Department and Police Department for caring for our people. And so it continues, Captain's John Huestead showed up this morning to check on us again to be sure we were okay. It ends, so glad to live in Plimpton. There were a lot of those. So kudos to all our departments. They did a great job and that song was very severe. You know, it wasn't quite what they made it out to be when it first came in.
Oh, true. My rave is along the same line. I actually had a flight out Wednesday morning out of Logan and I didn't realize how bad the storm was until we got out at 4:30 in the morning. And the, there were trees down everywhere and we weren't able to get to the train station because there was a tree blocking the road on 106. And then we thought we'd go to the, the Bridgewater Station and there were trees blocking the, the intersection at center and 58. And the DPW was there, police was there, fire were there. And we turned around and followed the DPW home and they were cutting trees as, as we were going. And it was amazing to see the great work that they did. We weren't able to get all the way home because trees were still falling as we were out and we had to park the, the car at the Upland Club and then walk home because another tree had come down and was now blocking the road. But it was crazy. It was, it was like a Clint Eastwood movie. It was the good, the bad and the ugly. And the town was the good. And you could decide ever source or Comcast where they fall. But it was, we really, our people stepped up. Amazing job. Great job to everyone. It's, you know, when we have these emergency situations, we appreciate how great the people are that we have. So thank you everyone for all your efforts because it was not, it was pretty dicey being out there. And, and they were out there on the front lines to keep us all safe and, and help the residents. So thank you, everyone. All right. Well, that's all we've got for tonight. So I'll make a motion that, that we adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy. Yes. All right. Good night, everyone. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.